Okay, and then.
So anybody that's out there that wants to come back in can come back in. Thanks, Silas. We always need you for something.
Your presence right here. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us now, though we're done with our executive session, that takes us down to Commissioner Updates, Announcements, and Discussion, and the first one is, the only one we have, is Discussion and Consideration of Calling a Countywide Meeting to End Homelessness, and that was requested by Commissioner Kula, so Casey.
Well, I know that we're all working on some pieces of this, and I've been meeting with a very small group that includes Director Howen Steiner, and we wanted to bring this up with you all because we are all working on some aspect of it, and we want to have all of our work be together and pulling in the same direction, and so I wanted to bring it out.
Yeah, Mary?
A couple of things come to mind, and I appreciate your interest in the work that you're doing on this, but what I will say is that when we put the umbrella of fixing a problem under the auspices of what is the county's vision, or what is going on countywide, the homelessness problem is being addressed, I'm going to say, by about half a dozen different projects that are moving forward incrementally all over the county, the cities, the nonprofits, the county itself. I think it's important to find out what everybody is doing, and that would mean, I would hope that that would mean you getting up to speed on who's doing what. We've got Strategic Planning Housing Authority, the McMinnville Housing Authority Task Force, what Health and Human Services is doing, what Newburgh is doing, what McMinnville is doing, and again, the nonprofits. It isn't a kind of a one-size-fits-all, and it's not something that I think government can fix. So for instance, if you look at the fact that we've got, in McMinnville alone, we've got a situation where we just can't seem to move the needle, and what my experience has been is we've got great opportunities, but what's in the way is unfortunately government. So when we discount that, and everyone's trying to work, but we've got the constraints of what our respective governments will allow us to do, I think the last thing we need is another meeting. What we do need to do is to be aware of who's doing what, which is important. But I see us, for instance, the McMinnville Housing Task Force, we've broken it into bite-sized pieces. We know we can't fix it all, but we can address veterans, and youth, and senior women, and all of that, so that's what the city of McMinnville does, in their own way. The city of Newburgh, in their own culture, does their own thing, and so do the... So I think that we get this false sense of security that because we've labeled it something or put somebody in charge, that it's going to move faster. I look at what the city of Portland, for instance, has done, thirty million dollars is what they're going to spend this year on homelessness. They still are dealing with the same number of homeless people, three thousand roughly, that they've had for the last ten years. So more money and more government involved doesn't necessarily bring us closer to a solution. It's not an easy fix. So look at what's going on with YCAP, they're doing their very best. So I'm kind of like, sometimes government is the problem, not necessarily the solution. So I like what everybody's doing on their own, because I think we're actually kind of at least incrementally getting somewhere.
Okay, my opinion, and this is really a perplexing subject to me, because I agree with everything Mary says, and I agree with what you said, Casey. I spent in the last two months quite a bit of time talking to homeless people out on Marsh Lane, out on Dustin Court, out down here on Second Street, the parking lot behind La Rombla, you know, and just going around, and what I'm getting from them, and I agree with what Mary says, but what I'm getting from them is that, and if these little pieces are working, well, it's work, you know, and ask them, "Well, where are you getting help?", or, "Can you do it?", and they say, "Well, everybody's trying to help us in a way, but nobody wants to know what's wrong." So nobody evidently is really talking, and I mean, and I had eight or nine different people telling me that, that says, you know, "These are the issues we have, like the shelter was, one, it's a great program, but here, March first, they're only going to be open two nights a week, so the other five nights a week, or April first, the other five nights a week, what are happening in those eighteen, they're filling up the shelter all the time." There just seems to be, and I don't know, I don't think there's a disconnect between Housing Authority and the county, and the city, and everything. I don't think there's a disconnect, where I think there is really a disconnect is between the people that are homeless and these other agencies, because as much as, like Mary and I have talked about it, is all the different places where they can get help, those people out there still don't know that, and that's what, and that's why I'm perplexed, because, you know, just sitting down, we went to that meeting over at the Civic Center, and I asked a couple of the homeless, I said, "Well, just come over and look", so two or three of them came over there, and they thought, they says, "Well, that's great, but that's all that workforce house has nothing to do with us, nothing we can do about that." So they're not getting the right word from the white people, and I like the model that Marion County kind of put together, if you remember right, they actually, they don't really oversee anything, but they, of all these little groups, they take the lead, they ensure these little groups are working towards something, and if you take the Governor's House Homeless Plan that has, points out the six priorities, the six priorities she points out in the homeless plan aren't necessarily the same six or seven priorities we have, so like, there's one specifically for homeless, there's one for the youth housing, there's one for work group housing, there's one for the veterans, you know, and they've identified the six different priorities, and that really impressed me, and what Commissioner Carlson did with Marion County just really, really surprised me, so I don't know if it's really a meeting of all the organizations, if I had my way, or I may still do, just convene a meeting as a commissioner, just to get, not necessarily a lot of government officials, but just to get everybody, a lot of the homeless that want to come in a room, and say, "Okay, let's go", you know, like I said, "Here's your", like we did at Y, H A Y C, "Here's the issues, here's the", you know, because if you have an issue, but you don't have a solution, or think what a solution is, it's not good, so here's all the issues, just the homeless have, here's the issues, here's what we think caused the issues, and these are the solutions, because they don't trust, even it's wrong, but they don't trust, and for some good reasons, but they don't trust even working with police. They don't trust a lot of the people working with the programs, because they just feel, "Well, this is what we", they don't want to get a say, "We don't want to get into that program, we just want someplace warm to sleep", you know, so that's why I'm perplexed, I'm not so sure, there is a breakdown someplace, and I think everybody's doing a great job for what they're doing, but it just seems like there's a disconnect, there's a disconnect between the people we service and the people who are doing the servicing, so. But I'm not so sure a big overall, like you, Mary, I'm not so sure a big overall government meeting would do, and I know when they addressed this back in 2008, when they put together the committee for the Yamal County Address, and then it was abandoned, and I don't know when, well, it was never banned, it was just made inactive, and I don't know why it was made inactive, but I'm not, I wasn't here then, so I'm not one to guess. So I put a lot of thought into this, but I'm not so sure if the meeting, if we were to have a meeting, I'm not so sure getting all these groups together like we did out at H A Y C, and talking about that, I'm not so sure, because everybody is doing a good things, but I'm not so sure everybody's working together to come up with the same solution, come up with the same solution, so. That's just my input, and it's almost like we're not really listening to what they're saying, or somebody's not listening, and that's what I think would be helpful, that kind of a meeting where we just don't have anybody from the organizations, or just a lot of the people, let us, let them tell us, without us even giving a comment, let them tell us what they think the problem is, because I don't know if we've ever done that, Mary, if you've ever been with, like HHS has ever done that, where they've just got a lot of the homeless together and let them talk?
Well, I'll just give you an example, at YCAP, you know, with the Dustin Court problem, they had a pizza party inside YCAP, and they asked everyone on Dustin Court to come in and talk about what their issues were, and they came in, and there were some people who didn't want to come in because they would have to, there were certain rules and regulations about being in this building, for instance, open carry a firearm, and so they brought pizza out to them, and basically what they've been told is, you know, they've tried, they've offered services, only a handful of people have accepted the housing, they provide food and all of that, but what you do have is a group of people who've made it clear that they don't want to be told that there are rules and regulations associated with that.
Oh, and I agree, I agree with that.
And so Housing Authority is the same thing, they've got Section Eight housing vouchers, and people who use the vouchers, and then you wind up with a lot of expense because of damages to apartments, so it's not like the effort isn't out there, and it's just that there are just a certain segment of the homeless population that are not really interested in playing by anybody's rules, but that Dustin Court does not define the homeless population in general, there are different segments.
Oh, no, I know five camps in McMinnville, but, you know...
Just different people for different reasons, but they're open to at least living within, you know, a civilized society, and others who are just being, you know, frankly lawless.
Yeah, and I, you know, so I'm not so sure if I even, it's perplexing to me, I don't know what can be, my big concern is with some of the ordinance, I say, and rightfully so, some of the ordinance in the city of McMinnville's, putting together what I think we're going to see happen is either we're going to move the problem from McMinnville to Newburgh, or we're going to move the problem from McMinnville out into the rural areas, or we're going to move it to Hammond here, so we're really not solving the problem by what things like McMinnville and Newburgh do, we're just moving the problem, and I don't know, to me, that's not a solution to the problem when you move it someplace else, but...
Thank you for those thoughts, I appreciate it. One thing I'd like to comment is that I know that Health and Human Services has a strong role, and a role that costs money in providing permanent supportive housing for folks who were experiencing homelessness, and I just want to point out that Health and Human Services is part of the government, but I'm really grateful that you have acknowledged that there is a problem here, it may be just not the solution, that maybe we differ in our solutions to it, and so I thank you for that, and what I would, the reason that I bring this up is that when lots of different groups are doing lots of different things, but our numbers continue to go up, that signals to me that it might be time for the Board of Commissioners to take a leadership role in that, but what I want to do is, I would love to see it be all three of us, and a meeting would just be a kickoff to reinvigorating the tenure plan to end homelessness that we had, that we established in 2009, and so, but I definitely, I understand what you're saying, and I hear that, and I appreciate it.
Well, and to just go back to maybe clarify, Health and Human Services does an enormous amount of work, yes, it is a government agency, what I was referring to is that in terms of an umbrella organization to oversee all these other entities that are working on homelessness, I don't necessarily know that that's the answer, and another meeting is the answer.
Right, yeah, I see what you mean, thank you for clarifying.
I think we're seeing a lot of good work being done, but the reason you're seeing numbers go up, despite, it isn't for lack of services, it isn't for lack of trying, it isn't for lack of community engagement, it is a situation which is defying everybody's ability to have a fix. You've got mental illness, drug addiction, criminality, restricted inventory and housing, we can't even give away place, five tiny houses that would be given to us for free, because we can't, based on zoning, put them anywhere.
We can't put them anywhere.
So really, what is the impediment there? The impediment is not that we don't have, I mean, we've also got a property owner who's willing to work on a project where there would be lots and lots of apartments, but he can't do it because the city won't allow him to zone this for that, so here we go.
Well, and I guess, you know, and I agree with you, because the tiny house concept, the clusters, I'm all a big believer in the tiny house clusters, but if that's the case, why aren't, and everybody's working on it, but as us as a group, as H A Y C as a group, what kind of pressure have we brought through our legislators and everything, onto the city to say, "Hey, there's some solutions, but you guys got to act on them", you know, I mean?
Well, I've been trying, and I haven't been getting anywhere, and I don't know that I'm at liberty to discuss any more at this point, because there is somebody's anonymity involved, just to be respectful, but, boy, it's sure been frustrating. You know, I've tried, I don't know what more I can do, except to say this is very frustrating, and you want to talk about what's going on at the state level, we've got this one-size-fits-all, as if Harney County is Multnomah County, and our land use laws make it so that we don't have any leeway to have inventory outside the urban growth boundary, without swallowing up farmland, there is a bill in the House, in the Senate now, in the Oregon Legislature, which would give rural counties the ability to do that, but we're not on the list.
No.
Unfortunately.
And we should be, because we're a rural county.
And now with this statewide rent control, how many landlords are going to say, "Fine, I'll do what we do in New York, turn all my apartments into condos, and there's even less inventory", so I think what the state is doing at the state level is not helping us out.
Rent control is not the answer, it's not the answer.
But anyway, back to your suggestion that we do a...
No, I appreciate the conversation.
Well, you know, maybe, Mary, and I think what we can do is, I'm as frustrated as you, especially as an ex-mayor, I'm a council, I'm as frustrated as you, maybe what we should do is have a meeting of just, the elected, with something like the McMinnville City Council, some of Newburgh City Council, just the elected officials, keep staff out of it, and talk on an elected official to an elected official level, let staff talk to staff, and we'll talk an elected official to elected official.
So we, I do have a meeting through YCAP set up with the city in two weeks to talk about one specific situation, and we're hoping to move the needle there, but I agree with you, Ms. Chair, I think that something's got to give, because we could talk all day long and have meetings all day long, and guess what, nothing changes, but if it was going to change, it would have changed somewhere with all the money that's being thrown at it, it's not just a problem of, "We're not doing enough", but there are problems that we can't fix. I can't make somebody get clean and sober and get a job.
That's right, you can't make them.
But you can provide them a house.
And if I provide somebody a house, who, we've tried this, you provide somebody a house who's not clean and sober, isn't working, has no interest in keeping that going, you can provide them houses all day long, and it's not going to stick.
I'm simply aware of housing curse policy models in other states that have been effective, they're, you know, they run through HHS programs, and that's what a lot of people in our community want.
Well, you know, I... Go ahead, Mary.
No, I was just going to say...
No, I think we need to rethink this whole thing, actually, because I think there is a place for all the elected officials, to actually not staff all the elected officials to meet together and say, "Okay, these are, let's be perfectly honest, let's hit the nail on the head, what are the real issues?", and you're the elected officials, and they're the only ones that could do a lot about a lot of those issues.
That's right, I agree, and I think giving, giving everyone a house, it sounds really good, but first of all, who's going to pay to give everyone a house? Where are all these houses, when, look at what the SDCs are, you go to Newburgh, twenty-eight, twenty-one thousand dollars, seven grand just for the parks, and everybody wants their piece of the action, so until we're willing to turn loose of those dollars as government officials, it's not going to change, but I think saying we're going to give everybody a house, it's a utopian dream.
Commissioner Starett, though, we just had a conversation, and in that, we were talking about giving people permanent supportive housing, and so I'm confused then.
All people, or the fact that we've got sixty-five slots for people who are going to fit into an extremely narrow model, in other words, these are people who we are, the city of McMinnville is filled with our projects that are very, very...
Amazing.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Look at the TTRS homes.
Yeah, exactly.
What I'm saying is, when you look at all these populations of people who have been resistant to any kind of help, and say, "Well, we'll give you a house and everything will be fine", well, it's not how it works, check with the folks at the Housing Authority, when they look at an apartment, they've given a voucher to someone, and it's trashed, and it costs thousands of dollars to rehab that, we're on the hook for that now with our new MOU, so giving people houses isn't the answer.
And I merely want to remind you that we are giving people houses now, as we choose to, on a regular basis, as county commissioners, so.
You know, if I might just interject one thing, and back to a lot of the homeless I talked to, their two biggest solutions were someplace dry and warm to sleep, and someplace where they could get meals, I mean, if we had a, I don't want to say barracks, but if we had a thing with forty single beds, like the shelter, because the shelter does a wonderful job, the problem is there's not enough of it, that's the issue, that kind of housing where people could stay warm, they could stay dry, you know, that they can get a meal, those, it's kind of reminded me of Howie Harkema, who I love dearly, Howie's old deal on the Compass, the Compass Center, I thought that was ideal, kind of dormitory type things around a central complex where people could come in and give services, but, and I liked his idea, I liked his idea.
Is that not what you're working on?
No, the Compass Center is defunct.
Oh, we know, I mean, something...
But, no, I was just going to say that we've seen, for instance, at the shelter, if you talk to the folks at the shelter, how many nights are there empty beds, because people don't want to come in and abide by the rules? Unfortunately, those beds, even on the coldest nights, will remain vacant, which is, again, a testament not to the services aren't there, but there are people who are resistant to what the requirements are to go into the shelter.
And may I address that, if you don't mind, the last time I spoke with Dave Hagerberg, he was talking about how it's really, for them, they feel like it's a marketing issue, so that's maybe a slightly different thing than knowing about it and choosing not to partake of it, but that's how it's been presented to me.
Well, I think by this conversation, it's evident we have a lot more work to do, and I'm not so sure exactly what all that work do, because I agree that everybody's done a great, you know, job, because we have a lot of great organizations that are out there working on it, and people that, a lot of the county programs, there are really targeted programs that they have getting to, and they have onsite staff, they have onsite caregivers, onsite counselors, you know, and that's what makes those kind of programs successful.
Right, so valuable.
But I think, I'd really like to revisit this, because I'm not so sure, I think, I mean, but I'll go back to, I think what we have to do is have meetings with the elected officials.
I think that's an interesting...
I'm all for that, yeah.
Yeah, and so I'll...
You are?
Yeah, I think it's important, but I also know, and that you can go to meeting after meeting after meeting, and we'll be back here in another year, and nothing will have changed unless we do something that changes what our restrictions are at the state level and at our city levels.
Yeah, and we know that some things are happening in the city, so...
And things are happening, but again, when we're told, "We can't do that, it's not zoned for this", and so it's like, what are you supposed to do when you've got someone handing you five houses, you could get set up right now, but we can't, because it's not zoned.
You know, when I talk to planning directors, you know, when I say, "Hey, I want to do this", or want to bring somebody else who has a complex project, what they say to me is, "Hmm, well, let's figure out how you can do that", and so I don't know, it seems like that's a different perspective that they're presenting to me.
Well, I'll give you an instance, Casey, like, there's a plot pattern, a lot in the city of McMinnville, which we could put probably fifteen or twenty tiny homes on, but the city of McMinnville, well, not, because it's zoned light industrial, it's been zoned light industrial for thirty years, and it's never been developed, and you go through a zone change, well, you know, if we go, but then the issue is, if you go through a zone change, to change it to like multifamily, residential, so you could do that, then the city has to go out and, because of DLCD, has to go out and find another twenty acres of light industrial, even though it's never been used, so those are the kind of issues.
It's a lot of state and local regulations that make it so, but just as, and this is as an aside, today, the foreclosure bill was dropped down in Salem, so I'll have a bill number for you later on this afternoon, but that is another way, however, maybe few people here and there get a shot at not walking away penniless from their homes, if in fact it passes, but how many people in Salem do you think are going to vote for a bill that means that government gets less money, not more? I'm hopeful, but all this talk about homelessness, you have a chance to do something about it in Salem, let's see if they're, you know, are going to put their hearts and their votes into a project like this and passing a bill.
Yeah, and I want to reiterate that when I go to the planning department for my own things, the response from the people at the desk is, "Let's see how we can make that work", and so...
Yeah, don't tell me you can't do it, tell me how to do it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not my taking, and I really appreciate that, I know that that's how the county does it.
That's how the county does it, the county is, our planning department's awesome, but there are some things they can't do because the state tells them they can't.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Anyway, I'll work on, matter of fact, the next four days I'll be with McMinnville's mayor and everything, and I'll talk, I'll talk to him, and Newburgh's mayor, and Dundee's mayor, I guess, is going, and I'll talk to them this week when we're back there, and see what we can work, see what we can work out with it. So Casey, I sure appreciate your, you know, your input, and I know, Mary, that we're doing everything we can, you know, and I mean, so, anyway, so anything else, Casey?
Oh, so one other thing that was, that's part of that, is that when the city of McMinnville set up their ordinance for vehicular camping, like you can't park in the street kind of thing, they also modeled their work after lame counties, I think it's United Way, is it, no, it's Salvation Army.
Saint Vincent de Paul.
Thank you, and so then Heather Hunter Champion Teams, you guys know this, but I feel like I should talk to the camera, right, set up her program, modeled off of theirs, and one thing that she, she's already, she has all the information, she has all the legal stuff, but she doesn't find, she can't find places for people to park, and she's come to the county, or she's come to me, because she wants to talk to the county about spaces that the county is in control of, and so that's, you know, something to consider for future conversations.
And this is a conversation that Christian and Remy Drapkin and others we've had over the years, in terms of, this isn't a new idea, and this isn't an easy fix, because there are just some things we cannot do, everyone thinks we've got all this property just sitting around, we could just stick people here and there, but the short answer is, it's just not tenable for a number of different reasons, which I'm sure if you talk to Christian, he could explain why we haven't done it in the past.
Yeah, and in this case, there's a program that's all set up, and the legal issues in theory have been worked out, so, I like to think that even things that we've tried in the past, we can try again.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm all for those, just because you don't do it once, doesn't mean you shouldn't try to do it a second time.
Our kids always tell me, "Try, try again", and you know what I tell them? "Oh, no, I just push a little bit harder", and on the farm, that works, we'll see if that works.
Okay, Commissioner, you have anything?
Yeah, just that the foreclosure bill is going to drop today, and the DHS bill, which would allow for a pilot project, to allow counties to do their own child welfare, is going to drop next week, and we're beginning our community meetings with our consultants that we hired, to ask people what their experience has been with child welfare, and hopefully present the blueprint to the state, should they allow other counties to take a little bit of the management on their own, so...
We'll do it right.
That's future homeless people.
And Commissioner Starett, thank you for sending that letter about twenty-one...
Twenty-one fifteen, that's the psychiatric drug tracking bill.
Thank you.
That's needed, exactly. The only thing I have, Commissioner, is to say, I'll be leaving, well, now, tonight, because of the potential snow, but the next, tomorrow, we'll be flying to Washington DC, Thursday and Friday, we'll be, there's about eleven of us who are going to be lobbying with the Secretary of Transportation and Infrastructure, and all of Oregon's delegation, senators and representatives, and a couple, DeFazio, which is really important, because he is the chair of the Transportation Committee this year, so we're hoping to go back there and convince them how much the finishing the bypass is needed, and I've gotten letters from Tillamook, new letters sent from Tillamook County, Washington County... And I've gotten letters from, uh, Tillamook, uh, letters, new letter support from Tillamook County, Washington County, um, Marion County submitted theirs in Lincoln, Lincoln County. So there and that, that's all, that's all I have. We have anything else, Mary, you wanna bring up?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the great conversation.
Christian, I was just gonna ask staff if they had anything.
If, uh, if, if it's okay with the board, I know you'll be gone on Thursday, but, um, we're ready to move forward with the, the closing and, and sale of the property on Fourteenth Street to the Mission. It isn't yet on the agenda, but I think it'll be ready. Um, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and add that to the non-consent portion of the agenda for, for Thursday.
I see no wrong with that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just go ahead, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, meeting adjourned.